Seven o'clock in about thirty seconds. So do you want to connect this to the online world? Welcome. Thanks to these people that have lives. Okay. Better be Tuesday. We don't have another meeting for three weeks, but the calendar falls. We may probably by that time. I saw that your list active list of projects. Thanks very much. I see that. Okay. Good. Won't get into that, but we have I suggested today, we didn't have any work session for today, but meetings. Like they have motion to approve the minutes previous meeting. Okay, it's second by Nathan on a favor. All right, Little Way Hotel. Back.
We're back finally. I don't know if we're gonna have anything on the screen or if you want me to go by. Or I draw.
Words on.
Can give everybody kind of a rundown. It was here the last time. And workshop session against a board meeting. This is the vacant piece of land remaining behind Dazin, Carrier Circle and Dennis still out there. The Speedway fuel station that's down in that area. Directly across the street from I think Joey's.
Yeah, probably Joey's. All on the halfway house.
Yep, so here is I believe Dazin. Dennis here and then this is Speedway at least. This is the rain lands back here. This was before the board. Honestly, back in two thousand. And was approved at that time for a hotel site. What would that be? Do we have plans for just the first couple of pieces? Never got developed, not sure why, but generally the same concept, same layout for the site. That hotel was indicated as having ninety-four rooms. As our application indicates, we get one hundred twenty-six rooms proposed. For a building. And again, as you can see, generally the layout was the same. This is an existing road coming in. It's constructed right about the years ago. From gutter or the valley. Into the suburb and then obviously the site here parking would be all the way around the building. Right here, approximately fifteen thousand square foot footprint. On the site. Previous plan that was approved a few years back that proposed twelve parcels for future development. We're not proposing any future development here. We're using the entire parcel. There is going to be a small green space up here that's going to stormwater management is generally going to be the same place as along the southerly, southeastern side of the site. Where we're gonna gather facilities and access obviously is coming up of Thompson Road. Driveway here is access on that. The site itself is about five acres in size. Coverage. I believe we have seven percent for thirty-three percent is our total post coverage. On the site, we did provide, I believe, with the application packages. Some obligations. We're looking at this is the same obligations. So again, we'll look at the board's input discussion. Patients do have the design standards or
You will hear, yeah, so that was the question we had a few months ago with the
Yeah, and again, this I think is similar. What was proposed for was done before the better. Here today. Just for reference, just to show the board, you know, what we did here. Previously. Color palette wise, though, this is generally my brand. It will be more browns, tans. White. This right now just has a brand generic sign on the wall. We'll have additional information on that. This is a, this is a brand. New brand for West Seventy-seven. Aaron Converse is on the here by video as well. Aaron was here with his partner, Danny, I believe. So Aaron's here. So we have meetings following this. Again, this is introduce himself. Give the board reassurances. This is, this is real project. This is something that
Well, good. I mean, you wouldn't be real. You do have, there's a bunch of the design guidelines.
Right.
Ephesians, other materials that are approvable in this.
Sure. We do have best assurance from common PR where application or hundred year and ten year out. So those requirements, you are aware of the to, I don't know if this is in aqua or water supply.
Thank you. That was a great summary. I just turned over the board and see if they have some of you were here or maybe several here. All right, now.
I assume you have an apartment. Yes, we do have, I believe, water. We had one extra space at one time. We may have that. We can live in a park.
You said you play covered.
One twenty-six, we have, we have one thirty at this point. So we can
It doesn't seem that's real. It does feel, but I'm gonna say.
Yeah, yes.
Just so I get my bearings on site. Thompson Road is
Thompson Road is right here. Tardelle Road is right here. This moves over to the Steel Street, so ninety-eight is that.
And so is is there a connection to two ninety-eight?
You missed that because
Well, coming between and the actual lot. Is it the entire boundary that we see dark line on your site?
Um, here, and then this actually goes out to Thompson Road. I believe this is suburban access. Unfortunately property.
Those are separate. You have a waiting.
Um, again, pretty inner foundation plantings around the building. So planting things in the islands and parking lots. We're definitely better off. Something that I would like right now primarily decision is treating.
The C. And I want to see how that thing is getting this treated. Aaron, at the end. Kind of sets me high and forgotten. It is still kind of you know, this will now here, so shouldn't I think it would be helpful. I think really good point of the helpful marketing sample too. That is there, but then also to stop along the west side, make sure that is substantial enough. So screen from the adjacent neighbor. Here.
And we can bring in some photos from the site and feature. Just so you can see what works like plastic brush or special locations, you know, along the two ninety-eight side. We can definitely spruce that up, but at the same time, we don't want to totally obscure the building because people may be
No, 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 not looking to obscure, but looking to do something.
Just kind of whole thing.
Yeah. From two ninety-eight.
Sure.
I don't want to feel like a private two ninety-eight. Or when I can't get to downstairs, I don't help there.
Yeah.
When we talk about tree, we talk about the actual
movies of of the so you know, different I'm saying way bigger than I think it ever turned it three months. And some of the things together. The The other thing that always seems to be overlooked is kind of pedestrian I see the guys. Um, you know, you've got Dennis, you've got Speedway, you've got great ending restaurant Joey's giving your pay. How do you connect? How do you connect all of these together in a safe way? An organized way? Is that part of your system?
Well, it is not.
Because they're all really touching that same something to think about.
Yeah.
I do.
It's definitely not a it's not a, it's more of a driveway or it's not really like a road. And that's the road there. So there they go, we're going to be the trail road. Site determined just these three lies. Certainly along the long area. In the could consider, you know, if you think in some pedestrian
So connecting Yeah, well, we have the there's more. Excuse me, can we please have a quiet? Right, conduct the meeting. The this Altima has a halfway house that probably forty to fifty veterans. That many don't have cars. And they'll be walking. And so I don't know how it does connect, but it's to have have opportunities to front crossing to Speedway or to Benning. Um, yeah, the other Oh, who would you want to say sorry? Is there a sidewalk that connects back to Thompson?
Uh, I was trying to recall if there was. It's just urban. It's just but I'll drop verify that. Apparently commit anybody to sidewalk, but pretty long. Sidewalk.
Well, I'm more interestingly, if you have people there and you got the daddies there, you have Joey's across or if people walk through under the down the daddies to further than you're gonna have towards crossing the bed. Take a bucket of dogs and safely and not have no so. Okay. Who went to the driveway? Who went to the driveway right now?
We rolled out the top standard is actually part of this parcel and it's sort of accessing process. You have speedway sidewalk. You didn't have speedway side, there'd be a sidewalk out there to pull the Thompson. Future expansion.
That might be another
here in
So they're
So yes. The
They should
So we'll just get these people to another person.
Okay. Yeah. John, great. Let Kathy want to see.
Don't just spell the trees. Steep river, what's the weight?
Uh, well, Aaron, I don't know if you're, have audio capabilities.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to hear. What was the question?
Um, if you could just kind of talk about the finishes on the building.
Oh. Yeah, so I think I heard you briefly talk about it. So right now, as you can see, we do have the main white part is Ephes. Definitely up for discussion on, you know, making some alterations to fit the the town's guidelines. The lighter tan is a hardy, hardy board that that we will match with the brownish on the ends. There's a hardy as well. And then we have brick base. And then we just do a shingled roof. We just do four materials, well, three materials, four different colors, if you will. Um, that's, yeah, that's kind of, kind of it on the on the material side.
Showing the roof slope. Like he said, shingles on the roof, but it looks like a flat
Did I actually both have a small
So so the Ephes will have
Yeah.
Yeah, this is obviously Ephes, the hardy is the lighter.
Yeah.
This is actually that brick.
And then we will, will most likely change to a pitch roof, just given the snow pack that happens in Syracuse, just to leave you at any issues there.
Yeah, there's a couple of spots that you definitely would have drifts issues without
Yeah.
You have, you use roof equipment or is it on the side?
Every, everything's on the floor or inside the building.
That's about, that would be the other thing. If you do have the guys, make sure that they're represented.
Steve, did you hear that? Cause I couldn't hear that.
Oh, yeah, utilities.
The E-Tacs, just make sure they're represented on the drawing.
Oh, yeah, they're right underneath the windows.
Yeah. So they are there. You can see them in some of these. Yes. That's the idea.
That is the idea.
While you keep working on it, it'll get you scheduled once you make little changes. What about just the architectural? I mean, I you're I mean, it's that's
There's a, you know, this is the main entrance here. There's a small canopy that's big about obviously there's cover over that main entrance. We'll have a couple of physical micros out there. So there, you know, again, some other
But no outside pool or anything like that?
No outside pool.
A pool or a restroom.
That canopy probably doesn't work that well in, in this area either. So I'm just assuming that you're going to make changes to the roofing and the canopy to show us what is really going to be built in this.
The roof for sure. I didn't hear the comment about the canopy. Sorry.
It, I, yeah, it pitches back towards the building. So it's like a shovel into those windows and that and the H and the heating units under the windows. So I'm assuming that wouldn't work.
Yeah. This rendering, it's, it's kind of tough to see. It goes well below the windows and we have two roof drains on each side that that handle the snow when it goes backwards or back. No, just when it melts, it, well, we have two roof drains on each side that will melt.
No, it doesn't go down a roof drain. Just, I'm just saying. Yeah, not you.
Water does it? What do you, what do you mean?
Right now, the, the front entrance canopy show is right in the graphics shows like it's slicing right back slope into the building. That will become a stove pocket. In the winter here, it's still piled up against the E-Tacs.
And drift.
And drift.
Oh, drift. I got you. Okay.
Showing what's going on there, but yeah, I think
We, I can look at that with, with our, with our architectural team and see what alternate we can provide on our next submittal.
And then one other thing I would add is any engineering work simultaneously gets a biller to our parent. scramble to move the process along. Simultaneous which
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you. If you want to go
Yes. He looked at the
Sidewalk along Dennis.
I wait, it's like maybe a thirty-six inch range. It's a tire.
On the on the that sounds not
Yeah, I'm not Speedway.
So of course, Spuray goes here possibly. Yeah, see, we have the
This is, it's a concrete
This sidewalk is over at the other, the sidewalk is over at the other side.
Hey, thank you. The sidewalk, there's something to do.
Obviously, we'll take a look at all that.
Appreciate it. And you can schedule, you know, the next meeting can be a work session. So I don't, depending on how fast you want to work.
Yeah, we weren't sure if there can be work sessions. We never worked.
Well, that's the best way to do it is and soon you get whatever in. I mean, uh, at least ten days. Or we have three weeks down till our next meeting. I don't know what the timeline is for the
I just
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Crossbow. Gosh, if you want to just yeah, okay. Then everybody are pretty familiar with it.
Yeah.
Give us the highlights and
Guys, like, why can't you talk to people? Do you want a representation or?
Yes.
Yes.
It's anybody that down.
Yeah. Again. As you know, we're back here with site modification and what we're looking for today is for the two items. First is specific use. So what we have here for the the building is it was determined it is a commercial garage and not a fat warehouse. Um, so that is the first part of it. And the second part of that is we adjusted our parking to work with that uh, use which we
I think you're all familiar with the electronic vehicles, vehicles. Both very specific. Vehicles. Especially
Right, and then I'll just speak on the site modification very quick. So all that we've done to change this is initially we had twenty-six parking spaces over here. We now have fifteen at the request of the board. We added a few over here. I think we spoke in seven or eight. There's a white bowl here. There's a dumpster area here. So I got six uh, over fifty spaces. Um, proposed from point six. And what that means now is our second part of the CD is we're seventeen spaces shy of sixty-seven that would be required with this um, so we're asking for a variance for the specific use issue and that the seventy-six now that's everything else is still wide as we're saying, with the small exception being we only very slightly readjusted this parking lot just for a functional orientation standpoint. Nothing is really changed. Curving remains the same. We just readjusted it for trucking. Trying to be easier. Um, during the changes for here at
Will there, will there be a need for T D chargers and all?
Um, just a question. At this point, I reckon so.
Actually, Chris. Yeah, you pointed this out to them numerous times, told numerous times is if you're putting any exterior charges out, chargers out there specifically need planning or approval and we're encouraging those who have moved the house, even though the on within place before or the foundation wall. So I hammered them on it. Christian's hammered it up. Uh, and so they know they'll have to come back if they're going to do it this time. They may be reserving that right to do it then.
Yeah, no, it's yeah, it has become an issue with Amazon. It's become an issue almost everywhere.
Yeah, no, we know. We've heard about the Amazon issue and we don't want to start hammer drilling or core drilling
No, I know.
Foundation wall and putting conduits in. We wanted to address promptly.
And the location of all these, uh, these, uh, and so the transformers and substations and everything else.
But the logistics, just on parking instead. If you look at it just from industrial, we had plenty of parking originally, but the determination with the number of us that, you know, spent some time and we appreciate that time to, to look through it is the commercial commercial garage designation required as part of that, personal garage designation requires pre-parking space of thousands. It gets up to a total of sixty-six. Total parking spaces. And so what we did is we decided to bring the fill up just a little bit of the construction grid up that allowed some more efficiency in the main and then working with Nate and Doug. Uh, they suggested we added, add some spaces over by the dumpsters. And because of some rating in there, all we could fit in six spaces over there that we were originally trying to put ten.
Yeah. The other way. And it was sixty-six that that's around against sixty-seven, I'd say, so it's basically some areas.
The business model of gasoline. You know, shipping. Any questions?
Just back, just back in the so if the, let's see actual we don't really only need thirty-five, but code says sixty-seven. So you're taking
We're actually
Trying to find out the
We had a work session and the end user was there.
Yeah.
And the actually which back and said
Okay, I'm trying to find
And they said this is what they need. Right.
Gotcha.
It's been more step Oh, it's the other way around. Yeah, and that's when Josh came up and said, okay, we can put some down here and Josh, I've worked on that. That's, that's what their end user
So you know all the end users, so you know the types?
Yes.
Okay.
You were actually surprised. Crazy. We were gonna thirty, thirty-five. Up to full, now they wouldn't all be there, but they might park there and go their full staff. Okay, I'm gonna make a revised crossroad recommendation. Some of you may not have had a chance to see it. It came out about five thirty tonight. Um, this board granted subdivision and site plan approval for this project at three point three thousand and three. The applicant now presents a revised site plan for the project, which provides a general for reconfiguration and reduction in parking on the site. Current proposals for commercial garage use accommodate certain use for electric vehicles. This use will require a variance in parking as well as a specific use permit for district. Board has reviewed the plan stated six eight, twenty, twenty-three, and is further informed by by the extensive review that the board recently entered. The prior site plan. This, in respect to this specific use permit, this board finds the uses posed generally appropriate for the location and neighborhood. But the understanding of specifics of the revised site plan review is as same will ultimately be approved by the board will ensure its compatibility and appropriateness for this area. Further, although the use is delineated, it's a garage under the code, the impact of electric vehicle performance of the use um, is far less impactful than would be present for a garage servicing traditional vehicles. Accordingly, this board recommends the CBA site plan approval with the condition that the application applicant returns to the planning board for site plan review and amendment to its site plan approval dated three twenty-three point three. This board further recommends that the variance Twenty three. This board further recommends that the variance for the parking be granted as the applicant has provided evidence. Electrical vehicle, commercial garage use will be adequately served by the number of parking spaces provided being forty.
Yeah.
Commercial garage is determined to be.
No, fifty. Fifty.
Fifty. Our anticipated uses, no one in forty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Let me just pick a fifty so that it's recorded in the record properly. With anticipated use of only forty. Commercial garage is determined to be both other commercial and quote under the code required sixty seven, so the variance would be. For seventeen. That's you. The uh. Site plan is presented here in subject uh to final site plan review to accommodate a reasonable number of parking spaces without impacting the site amendment with. Require more extensive storm water management and impacted joint sites.
On the correction, it says the CBA to grant this specific permit.
And on the beginning, did you say it was a reduction in parking? Shouldn't it be an expansion of?
Around you from twenty six to fifty.
Um. I thought I heard. Oh.
It's depending on your requirements.
Yeah, we got the numbers here.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only little technical detail in there is that, is there any, was, is there something addressed about the ninety degree turn of the parking lot of A? In 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 terms of the resolution? It's the same number of parking spaces. He just turned it ninety degrees because it's about the slight difference in terms of the drainage.
Yeah, we adjusted this area.
Well, that's the site plan. Topic, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes.
So you're gonna go with your specific permit, your variance, and then you're for our time.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All good. All right, motion to approve. Nathan, second, all favors. Anonymous, accused. The letter of the project. Okay, but thank you everybody. Good work, Joey. Okay, uh, carrier park um.
You wanna just give them.
Yeah, this is this. Did everyone see they have? Okay, I mean, it's just a. Just adjusting. A little, just adjusting it a little bit. I think keeping it out and. Consideration, but it is. System of carrier and just make sure we do it proper subdivision and so it gets filed and everyone knows what what it is. So it seems like um. I mean, it's.
It's being simple subdivision.
Yes. You don't have to if you make it, I think that's.
I have no problem with it.
Sometimes it was simple, but then we say it's not.
Right.
That's your criteria.
Excuse me, asking if you guys want to talk.
Okay, sorry guys, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the subdivision plan that's presented with the following findings. This is a subdivision land under the code, so no new lots are created. This involves the movement of lot lines. Two, the lot line adjustment is minor. It's intended to create an effort. Appropriately configured and sized lots so that the person may be needed to here from carrier to the town uh or carrier park slash town purposes. There should be no special interest of the public in the lot line adjustment, given its minor nature. This is not significant to change the lots. Re-ordinarily and in light of the office board raised public area requirement of subdivisions and then by the code. Where there is no new lots created of public interest, it's not my adjustment. This board also has reviewed the submitted by the applicant, which is a negative secret declaration for the project, finding no significant adverse environmental impacts. Yep, you must file the subdivision map. And and on that county clerk's office, according to county, buy a copy of the stand file map of the town to the board to decide whether to care. Just as a aside, there's no, this is carrier park for baseball. There's no different use. I know I knew that. I'm just wanting to make sure everybody else that. Kevin, we're appreciative of. And donation. Same. At a close point, you should tell them uh there's a motion that would. I noted my conservative right here. Okay, life, second. All in favor? I made the motion, okay?
Seven fifty, Crossbow, everybody.
Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's nice words. Why? All right, last one, Joey's. So this is to the board. Uh, some of you heard, we're gonna learn that. Uh, just as a reflection, th- this is a little bit of a work session. It's obviously a formal meeting, but um. Yeah, okay, really felt like they wanted to get the impact with the architects and others that are very talented uh to comment sometimes, you know. Realized that we're remote um. Is uh, it's not as personal, so this is a good opportunity because make sure you had um. A half hour worth. Formal business, so. Proceed. Uh, this is the, we've been, we've talked about this and there have been various uh people in attendance. It's when we talked it. Some, you were here for a couple or vice versa. So we want to get everybody together. I'm glad they all came and uh. Let's get onto this too. We can't get this hung on. I would encourage this too, though. I'd like to introduce everybody. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not done. I I I want to encourage because we want to move this along. Now and everything else. Uh, in terms of engineering, this is something very fearful towards it. Work on architecture, but. Like see everything, it's not the case. Well. Okay, so anyway, uh, William Walton, the architect, Martin Wees, with the associates, old site work. Is uh the owner of Bill Clary and the former owner Joey DeNop over here. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Who's the guy? Yeah, if you want to introduce everybody.
That's the future mayor. Bill Trucco. All right.
Okay. Um, okay, are we under any time? Sure.
Well. Yes, no, uh, just we'll keep it reasonable.
All right.
We want to, we're gonna get you some comments and.
Okay.
We've. Uh, Terry, would you, if you're our term or note taker, make sure that we go back and summarize so that we can see. But you're here and you're.
Yeah, because as I was saying, what I brought along was. Basically, media or flat drawing representations uh to show, uh, but it was easier to show some of this in the power bond that we can spin and rotate and run around, whatever. That would take a little while. This gets set up. So I'm hoping that this board suffice to. It is explain here we are. Yes.
Okay, well, we prefer the the la- the the order of what you return to with the best thing. In the eventual.
Okay, well, I think I'm gonna give some something, give you a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so just to start with site context, um, this is a, you know, suburban, but it's really a semi-industrial site area. Um, it's surrounded by asphalt and that you may know, or I don't know. Joey's, but um Joey's is right. Here. Uh, in a sea of asphalt and it's really between the overpass and ninety and getting off of carrier circle. Pretty much dead center between those two.
It's over the rest where the hotel, the hotel we're just.
I think that's back over here.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so along that um section of Thompson Road, there's gas station at the corner. There's a chain restaurant, a single story. Um, there's two or three hotels. One, it's been converted to a residence home or something.
That's just.
Yeah, those are two, three and four story. I mean, looking at. Um, there's also the corridor, doorie, uh, office space, which is a single story, just. Crossing over the bridge. Um, and then there's the parking lot to the east, which is um truck parking for the way. So um, that is our context. Element. Um, the traffic on Thompson Road is is heavy traffic. So a lot of it is truck traffic. I've driven it several times. It's noted as forty miles per hour, but not personally it was for. Most of them were going to five or six. And I um, I timed the section from getting off a carrier circle to where I could see Joey's restaurant, you know, once, because it's a little bit of an uphill. Getting off this bend here, you got about thirteen seconds before you can actually see Joey's and about another five seconds and you pass, you know, and that's going at forty. Which I had our time going because everybody wanted to push me along. Same thing coming this way. This is a bit of a rise coming up here, so you really don't see any of this until you get up over this overpass and you start coming downhill. A little bit there and that's about the same time for up in thirteen seconds. So it's a short window to be seen and a short window to be observed in terms of, you know, drawing attention or, I mean. Locating that site. It's a destination that you haven't been to before.
Um. I would just, you know, I don't know what the percentages are, but I would just say. You respect some things that it is more of a destination that's spontaneous.
It is.
Uh, so as a reminder, patience. Uh, it's a positive in terms of the fact that the site. Lines.
Yes. Yep. Um, it's limited vegetation out there. There's really not a lot of trees and shrubs along that road, as you can see. Um, most of them that are there are small growth stuff. It's either been recent or turned back. Um. Side access is by vehicle. As you said, this is a destination. Um, there's no pedestrian path traffic on this road at all. There's no sidewalks. I don't think anybody's walking to the side with the exception of maybe anybody will be told that it's on that side of the street, but definitely not. To the other side of the street. We do it to give it light a little bit. Um, so it really is a vehicle access site for this restaurant. Um, and in terms of architectural character, it really isn't. It's really is vanilla plain Jane boxes out there, industrial buildings. Really have no, no really. Distincting features, but it didn't show that at all. Um, so that is the site. Um. We've got a couple photos. This is a view standing in the parking lot where the building would be located, uh, looking south, so back towards carrier circle. Uh, I assume when this building's gone, this will be clear, but there is the hotel. It's just beyond the state. The gas station in the corner, restaurants over here. It's a view west. Which is the day center across the street. That's. Our story. Or. Um, so there really isn't that way. This is looking north. Uh, at where the site would be located, which is just beyond this car. Basically, the site proposed site for building is right in this area here. Um. Which is a part of the constraint of our design because we're building a building prior to the removal of the existing. So. Having to deal with that as being our getting one of the seven constraints uh in terms of what we do. Um, this other building here is on the site as well and it's. That's another hotel. It's beyond the other side of the access road. Uh, this is view of Joey's existing. Um, in the south side. And that's you looking at the north. That's just a panoramic view of that section of the road in west. So you get more context. You can turn around to looking east. Parking lot, town. So, um. So in terms of the site. Our response on the building, when it's done with the building, really, like I said, do the basing of the building, uh, you know, the existing building in place, which you see there in gray. The existing building. It's coming down right here. Um. It was, it's due to uh site conditions, the traffic in the parking. Um, we have a shared parking area. The, it's part of our parking cap with the existing hotel. It's on the south side of there. Um, visibility from Thompson Road. It is out close to the street and it will have some visibility. Um, once you clear the circle, my carrier circle, within this thirteen seconds, you will be able to see this building. Which is part of the reason why the building is the shape it is and the heights it is. We do want to get that visibility, so it's not just a single story structure, even though it is a single story building. Who wants to hide with this to make it that visible, how much you can see. Um, and as I said, there is no access from. Something from sidewalks, pedestrian, everything comes from parking lot. So that's what led to, I think, some of the earlier speech is.
That's right. Well, you you keep messing it up. We may still look for sidewalks if we talk to all my way. We have quarter fifty men there, the mostly without cars and. So we haven't given up that you've heard from the previous applicant. Now, I'm not having s- some kind of sustainable, honorable area there. It it is difficult, but hopefully. Force the DOT to do something more uh safe.
Yeah. Yes.
While you're on that note, I already spoke with them. They're not in favor of the sidewalk. That's. Yeah, well. This is not the greatest thing.
It's. They don't want the light.
Yeah, well, I think we need to do what we think is best for the. We just picture everybody. They're they're nasty for sidewalks in this area, so I think it's gonna be. Something that. Yeah, I so, uh, there's no question. So we we've got, we currently have a plan for the whole history. Take the sidewalks all the way down, take it around sidewalks on Thompson Road, or continually just like. Our next, our next step is to bring Kate Road up, up into the old very high area and bring that all the way up through. So this whole area is. Consideration. So I just, I don't want to labor, but we're not discussing that. We're not gonna put sidewalks. Uh, we have talked all about that was a part of the resolution. This goes to have something. All right, so go ahead.
Um, so uh, the access.
One more thing. It's part of, it's part of what you said, Mark. Even trust that liability on every sidewalk we've done in the town. So the DOT always comes back and says they don't want liability, but then sidewalks get technology. So we've done that throughout the work. You're in, you've got. Eight to ten. Sidewalk. Forward. And that, and that's how we've done it. It's, you know, they they say they don't want. Thank you. Good, sorry.
Um, so the access by vehicle continues as a estimation point by power. Sidewalks would lend. An entrance to service the parking area and not towards the street side. So we are facing south. Whether we have a sidewalk or not, we do have a sidewalk. It's all the way. Along the front of the building out to this, so we could definitely pick up sidewalk traffic uh into this, into the entrance. But the entrance is located in this corner, which services the parking area.
Let me just know something that planned it. See, there's none. Proven by the CBA, we have one entrance. Instead of only. Okay. So I have. There's, there's currently two entrances.
This plan shows two and we have.
No, but.
We have one.
There's two existing curb cuts along.
Okay.
But where this new plan. By the CBA side, reduce it down. We have one entrance. So.
So the layout of the building, um, this is the layout of the building and the function of the building is based on, and the form is based on a couple things. It's based on. Uh, the restaurant use side of the restaurant, uh, which becomes an external um. Representation of the flow of traffic, the flow of the restaurant use. That's why it lends itself to the curved form, which is the main mass of the building. Um. The entrance here brings you into the vestibule, which then brings you into the center core of the building, which is the height. When you see that comes up through the dome of the building, the radius of this building, which is the focal point that we are highlighting as you come up from, you know, to see the building. Um, this is a heavy timber framed building, so these are uh structural. Cross columns and framing that comes out, so it's radiating out. So as you enter the building. Traffic flow is around this radius on the inside, which with bar and restaurant services, and it radiates out to the seating area around from your. I'll show you what that looks like. And then the kitchen is the back house, which is on the north side. Um, this is a private dining room that's on this side, which is a special function room. Uh, and then there's the support space to other rooms.
So that that's the only banquet area is that one.
The one large. The one large function. As you may know, Joey's had upstairs and downstairs, and there is still a philosophy here that. That that might still be carried out as part of the seating and the function layout, and that's why. Um, also too, the, the entryway splits this, so this area over here can become much more formal or an intimate. Private area as opposed to the main dining area. Keeping this area still as functional um, space for groups that are using. Um, and then the kitchen layout, so you can see there, that's the seating layout and the bars in the center. So that's some really the reason why the shape is what it is.
Is that a hundred twenty four to seating area, the dining area, does that include outside seating?
No, it does not include the outside. We've not done the map on the outside seating. Um, and, and the outside seating is something that if, you know, if there's an issue with elevation stock or. That we'll get to, you know, we'll lose, we can take some of that off, but that's not, you know, something that the town wants us to pursue. So, um, these are the, these are the straight on elevations of a building in public, a north, south, east and west. Um, and they're roughly that, but they're flat elevations, so one of the things you're seeing here is the curve of the building, which lends itself to. Uh, busyness, which I've heard two, three times at this forum, but. So, you know, it's hard to represent a curved building that has these elements that are coming in and out of that curved space as part of that. Mention now, when you, when you flatten it into a straight on view. Um, but that is the center core of the circulation, which has the bar that's in here. Uh, this is the dining room, this is the entry box, which would be a, a, a well lit box that you would see. And then this is the door that gets you out to the outdoor patio dining, which is on the west side of your building. And this is the functional room, the function room that you see beyond. And this is a view on the west side, so this is what follows along the road. This is that private function room. Outdoor patio dining. For the restaurant, you see part of the uh, entry, which you guys will be on. This is a, a piece of the back house, which is the kitchen, which is turned beyond. This is the north side, so this is along that access road that gets you into the doorway parking area. Um, there is a tree line along this, this side of the lot that does give pretty well protection. Would see this corner pretty well, probably not good to see the back house kitchen. And then this is the east side, so.
It's a series of doors for me.
Those are, those are for freezer coolers.
But no double door, like no large door?
Oh, like an overhead door?
No, even like the double door, like how are you getting kitchen equipment into the building?
Everything's coming through handles. Um, so this is the east side, so this is that um, special or the more intimate dining area. Uh, I thought that's in this part here, this is the entry vestibule. Box to be, and then this is the back house kitchen entry over here, this is the stair. It's an internal stage, the basement space. HVAC, so that's going on the roofs, yeah, that's going rooftop and it's on this kitchen. In this, up in here in this corner, so in plan. So, this is a shed roof. This dome is higher here. This section of the building is lower, so all we've got to put in for the kitchen and for the eating room in the restaurant would be on top of this section. Screen from.
You get to select the equipment you're showing these elevations, they actually. Size and make sure that's accurate. So I think this is where we're all gonna focus this next, you know, about ten minutes in terms of. And get the people's perspective on the.
Yeah, so I'm, what I'm gonna do is just flip through these, so these are walk around of the building, starting from fourth. West, north west corner. I'll just flip through these.
Let's, let's stop right there for a second, I see the, and the elevation is. No, no, stay right there, just on the. A stone base wrapping going up here to the sides, again, the windows, between the internal and internal. This then changing color. Right, what's? I wasn't sure if I had a shadow.
Talk about this, or if you.
Get the, the, the line, where's on the line where you're pushing right now?
Yeah, I think it's just the material.
It's rendering the material. Just the way it's.
Yeah, alright, 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 I just had to make sure.
Being number two, I love the rock samples of the stone, you got sliding and I think no.
I, I think a lot, I'm not the architect, so, but the elevation to obtain the continuity of those elevations, how they. Harmonized with the rest of the building, that was sort of my take. Beyond my expertise, but.
Well, in terms of material, basically, I've got a stone in here. Uh, which you see there, and I've got a wood synthetic uh, siding material, it's a rain screen material. Um, that is the wood to seeing there at the private dining in between the pile last year's. And then I've got a standing seam roof on top of those roofs and another standing seam on top of the higher roof. I've just changed colors between the low roof and higher roof. The one on the top is more copper. Material and the lower roof is this. About the tan or something. ATS.
Quite tiled ceilings that go with the Italian tile wall that I saw, saw Florence last time I was there.
So these pilasters, these wood uh, heavy timbers out here that create the outdoor dining. Are continuation of the radiating lines from the heavy timber structure of the interiors, they're basically coming from the outside. And that's what I also said previously, I think that adds the business of the elevations to have that shown, but it's been part of it.
Where's your, um, your outdoor seating?
Straight here.
As I thought.
You don't know how many tables you made up there yet. I think we have room for eight tables out here.
Is there gonna be any copper or is that, it's gonna be?
No, there's landscape. So again, um. So I'm just moving on around the building there now, you can see the entrance way, vestibule. A bit more into the dining area.
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna refer the rest of you to. If you see that, like it, what you see that you think.
So that is a sidewalk that's on both sides of the maintenance, I guess. It's on, it's on the phone, but I didn't see it here.
So this is.
Well, there's, there's a sidewalk.
It's gonna go here down to the road and then it goes to the back to the dumpster area to the rear end.
My, my, my biggest.
Yeah, can you go back to the elevation sort of, please?
You wanna tell me what it's.
Yeah, uh, go, continue to turn around to the right, no, go back one, go back, go back one again. Yeah, there you go, stop there for a second. I understand what you're doing. I think I get it, and I. I'm, I'm struggling with it, whether or not I wanted, wanted to see, I'm a big timber guy, like so. I'm trying to figure out if I'd wanna see a bigger overhang on the turret top, so that would be a better shadow place, just as a solid block, anything that helps create that shadow plate. It's great. I love that, actually, I, I like the idea of the timber elements securing, you know, radiating out. And the more we do to it, to express that, the better, that's that. Layered effect of air, you know, bringing this in down visually, grinding by their force, shadow by going on there, catches your eye. Then as we go around the course, I don't know if there's people or overhang as a structure.
I mean, the scale this might be a little bit hard to read, but I think I'm at three or three plus.
That's what, that's what I want to see, the model, I want to be able to see it and see what you're trying to forget. And you're the right.
But, but I guess what I'm talking about over here, about this one.
This one, I'm talking there and I'm also talking down here, but no, I'm talking about down there.
Down here also, okay.
And I think that really does overhang, because that's the seating area. So that comes all the way over, but I think it's just not showing up. I can see it towards.
Um, how you got to the entrance cube element, the multi-story glaze thing that then skewers into this thing. Versus playing off of a. An element that radiates the, the, your arbor, your trellis element wrapping around the corner.
Yeah, I, I really want the entrance to, to pop as, as the entrance. And I don't want to try to blend with the rest of the elements, I want to be, the ma- the main thing that you see, that you focus on is, is an entrance to the building. And draws you to that. An example I'd say too, um, that I've done, that I had as part of my work on, I don't know if you guys know the um. Atlanta people in downtown on um. Bay Street and right near Foreman Park. Uh, VIP did the um, the structure of it, they created a glass box entryway for that old historic building. On the northeast side. Uh, I was part of the lighting consultant, that's what I lived that. So that's where I'm headed to here is lighting that box, because this is the nighttime use, it's a dinner restaurant. You're gonna get, you have restaurant uses at lunchtime too, but nighttime is their main focus for fine dining. And that's why I wanna see that entrance well lit as a, as a glass box. And, and I have, I had different roof forms on there, um, that we played around with, we had a hip roof on at one point. And it's uh, inch, a back inch roof on that's sloped up as it came out. But, but you know, me and the, what the flat group element is, is.
Is there, and you guys don't have to take this comment at all, because it is, I think that it's just hard to read some of the drawings, right? So, because there's a lot of elements and I just think that the rendering isn't, but. In some of the pictures, these look like they're almost touching, but then I think that hopping up. Looks a little strange, like this should be coming all the way, but, but that's like a design comment, you don't. You don't have to take a design comment, but I think that those are some of the things that make it look so separated. Because it goes step, 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 and nothing is connecting it in the front to kind of like have it. And then, in a lot of the images, just so you know, like. This is showing two different colors, top and bottom, and it's making it look like a lot of different finishes. So a lot of it is, I think, the rendering that isn't, well, one of them, like this shows as peaked on one of them and this shows as. So I, I think that a lot of it isn't showing well, but I think like, even if this line came more over, it would make it look less. But this is, that hopping up was funky on that view, so, but.
It's kind of a punch into the plan though too, because to bring that roof down.
It would have to come out further.
It would have to come out, and it would come out on its own, because look, I can't, I don't wanna bring the wall out, first of all, I can't add space to the building.
Right, but see how, how here you dropped it down, here.
But that's the outdoor trellis.
So clearly you have the outside too.
He thought of the, the trellis fight element wrapping.
And that height.
Right, but right now, my eyes have been jumping up over your entrance too, but I don't know how to tie the door.
Yeah, those were.
My eyes try to say, your cool timber element on the outside that wraps around and then re-engages with your glass cube.
Yeah, so.
I do like that glass cube, I like that, I like to put a stone on the backside.
You know what I mean?
You're on the backside.
Maybe they have one.
Parking lots.
Yeah.
And you're, or drive in, you've got that cube that as you're coming around, you're radiating around with your turret form there. The glass cube's there, it's backed up by a textural stone wall, it's part of the, part of your stone element.
Right.
And then you're lighting that, you're lighting all that great ways, lighting there, then you hang a glass cube up of that. My eye would take the glass cube just down a little bit, so it doesn't blend into the slow proof and the top turret. Let that top turret be as clean as you can get it.
Idea of a cube or not one. Formal dining area. Yes, another cube on that side, so you have that, because it's what, it's what presents out to. White, it's got a shed roof, and if you have that thing, cube and cube with the curve. I think you start to see, start to see that layer.
Yeah.
Elevation, it goes up towards the peak of that.
Yep.
I'm glad that they said that this is a little bit of working, because I, I think it is that you've had some architects giving, giving that. Opinion of how, of how, how nice we could make it come together a little bit more, because this element right here. Doesn't attach to this element that is at the same height, but we're trying to find a way. To make it that there's not three different heights in between there. So, you know, you've got a bunch of architects trying to draw a, a line in, in eye. You know, and like he said, he's giving you the elements that that could show on the inside and how well it could be lit with that different texture. But, but that can't show well in, in these images, you know? And then you have another pipe over here, so I think that that's why they're saying this could. If this could come down a smidge.
Yes.
Then you, you're getting stuff to come together a little bit better, so I think.
Right, yeah, and I can see the time and together with the.
Yeah.
Not without having to do too much to the building, um, possibly.
Well, let me just, I'm gonna interject something here, just uh, copy two. Cause I don't wanna, we're not gonna be here all night, but I wanted to just go back to the code and uh, our design guidelines. And our under architectural general, architectural drawing, as described below, shall be provided for every new and renovated structure. Regardless of its size and that it is. And for all projects involving additions and facade renovation. Drawings must be comprehensive enough for the planning board to assess the aesthetic quality of the overall design, as well as the selection. Insulation of methods of material. All buildings must have a foundation that puts, only the thing should take into account the building's neighborhood, which you articulated well as. And something athletic, uh, context, use, size and scale. Building materials should be appropriate for the context and used traditional materials like wood, stone, for simplicity of form is preferred. Likewise, simple color schemes are encouraged. The use of the, for your, or fewer materials, including doors, window frames, or colors in the given facade. Over, overuse of signage, ready schemes involving architectural elements as part of the signage. Merchandising is strongly discouraged. Your plan must be submitted, showing all roof mounted equipment together with the screening of equipment, I want this to be a rate with Nathan and said, and it's good. So there, that's coming from the design guidelines and sort of ties this together, and if you were trying. The design guidelines and sort of ties us together, and if you were trying to summarize what we're all trying to say in our own way, some lessons formed in others. Does that help you?
Yeah, I, I have read it, so yeah, I did, I do understand.
Well, we have that right. Read it and heard what we're saying in relation.
Yes.
Okay. And so that's your charge.
My, my last thing, as long as the turret thing is the uh. Thought about the. Other size windows. I keep wanting to see this.
Yeah.
Now the uh.
Oh, that's. Yeah. Possibly. I don't know.
Take my way, opportunities there.
I, I wanna be able to control that, but I don't want a lot, I don't want too much to end this space, so.
You said it was an overhang, like three foot?
Yeah.
So.
So they're gonna get, it's gonna get shadow.
Yeah.
So what form, moving on, what form if you wanna like to see this coming back in these?
I think text. These text. And so I, I am sorry, I am the. Fewest member of this, so if I've misspoken anyway, but tho- those were my things that I.
Yeah, I think there's just some, some extent, just. We need to have those lines, simplifying the forms. I, I, I just, it's still feel. Very busy. Yeah, just. Oh, I, I think that's, I think that's really what, yeah, it's. Simplifying some of the forms, simplifying the lines, beating up, getting. I think there's something there, I think, I'm not even trying to discuss that, I think there's something there, I think it just needs to be. Fine, it's enough. Yeah. Okay.
Two things.
So then.
Which is being seen. Um, unified loop.
I don't think I'm.
Well, at, at some point, you gotta come back, so we're not gonna, I mean, you're gonna get a lot, lots of. But, but I think Nathan and. The uh.
I mean, I would say as a general, that if I took off the outside. Furniture, the, the pergola stuff, that would clean up the elevations and clean up the building a lot. Just by doing that, you know?
I think you need to put it into your design, it looks like an afterthought, it looks like you added it on after.
Yeah, listen, head it up.
No, no, but I'm, I'm saying it kind of looks like that because of the elevation compared to everything else, so. I, I think that you, we have like that. Well, that cleanliness that they're saying, that less busy. And.
But the shape of the building is what it is, and you know, I can do extensions of roof overhangs to. You know, um. You know, to, to bring, so the roof line. You know, this roof line here. For this part of the building is, is about three feet off of this building, so if we bring that around. Would, would bring that into this entry per, entry best fuel. Because this is recess quite a bit. You know? Right here, I've got an outdoor waiting area, that's instead of people having to wait inside, they have a chance.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you your, your program for that.
Yeah, so, and I really can't pull this out, because I don't have any square footage in the building to.
Door waiting area, people are, you know, out there. Rain or snow, like. But if, if that, if that roof line is three foot outside. The wall there, and you carry that line straight across, you're capturing and covering anybody that's waiting outside right now. From the renderings, I don't see that, that overhang.
Yeah.
Over the waiting area. It seems like you've cut away the roof of the waiting area.
I guess, the rate, the waiting area is back here with, it's in front of, in front of this, there is all, it's not a roof overhang, it's maybe way outside in, in the rain and snow.
Well, I don't, I, we're not gonna design it, but uh, but uh, I think you've got plenty of comments and uh, and you can come back maybe.
No, no one's complaining about the, the shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it was very helpful with the, with the song. It's a day, it's a couple hours. You send it to the, you know, reports. That's why they were. We asked on the. This case, the plan north elevation, there was a series of. Were. Freezers.
Freezers, yes.
Right. On this, I'm seeing those doors, but what is that, what are the block shapes that's being built off that?
That's, those are coolers.
So those, those coolers were not represented in the elevation.
No.
They, they need to be, they need screened. Screened.
Yes, they will be screened with the same material that they're, for the trash and um.
Right, I would like to see them represented in your elevations, because they are physically attached.
They're, they're actually not attached, they're separated by some, some. Actually. Just a little.
Still think they need to be. Yeah, yeah, they, they need to be part of it. Okay, they, the uh, the, these freezers and coolers. They're usually after lots of, and then on after. Lots of space for building, doing it, so they can incorporate into it. And uh, but they should be hidden, you know, as you can see. You've got the doors, I buy that. Incorporated that. Same material to. London.
So when you're. So on the rendering, you're not showing freezers, you're showing the doors into that.
No, you're showing the doors into the kitchen. Freezers and coolers have been just moved.
Right, they're not.
Yeah, doors you're looking at at these doors right here.
That's a whole nother form.
Yeah. But we're putting a bunch of trucks there, right, and hiding it.
We're not designing it, I'm, I'm gonna stop it here, because we're not here, yes, designing this, or it is set up, I know, okay?
So uh. This is a dumpster, so they can scream right here too.
I have A and B, I can.
So.
That's what I meant, like, I knew I saw a bunch of trees.
Yeah, trees, but the same intension that we do for the dumpster.
Work session material, uh, and I agree with you if uh, you know, if you want. And then Nathan was very gracious, if you wanna meet, if we do a work session, I'll come to here if you wanna be in person. If you think we've got it, if you wanna circulate this, don't wait, so, you know, the Tuesday, uh, get the things out, get it out in the form that. You're showing this to the board, to the Doug and Terry, and they'll circulate it, and we can give comments. Instantaneously, they're not, I mean, I suppose you.
Yeah, yeah. Um. I just need a little more notice in three or four days, we're gonna be meeting. So that I have it on my calendar, because. Last one was like.
It's up to you, you get it in time, you, whatever meeting you want, as long as they're submitted in time. All right, yeah, thank you. Thanks. Uh, dude, if we had said, we don't have another thing that, uh, Nathan, did you just wanna just briefly mention the? Uh. Uh. The uh. Laboratory service. In weekend. Yeah, the, the old warranty bonds going back, so the, the hundred ten thousand square feet could be up to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Uh, it's a, it's taking, you know. Five uh technology pathology asset labs that they have downtown, they need the space, so they're. They do fifty three, fifty five percent of the business uh with other counties. Uh, these pathology labs are very highly. Regulated and certified, because these open trials. And. Um, issues are, are uh. You know, safety issue and police issue, so this is a, a good location because of its uh proximity to the interstates, and so it's great for the town. Uh, they've got quite a team, Doug, so Murphy is the developer. And uh, who's the architect they mentioned? Uh, Slam. 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 Yeah, the property that reached the uh, over there by fly road there.
I didn't know what you were talking about.
I'm sorry, apologies, I did, did, but anyway, I just want you to know. I think you're right, yes, they're talking about a little, why aren't I the, working on it, Slams? It's, it's kind of, uh, this is, uh, there's, oh, in and out traffic, other than. And um. The uh.
Going.
Vehicles. And um. The other thing is that this like, this, this something can move very. It's trying to face. And the help. And, I mean, I think they had this up there, I think we just asked them to actually put something on paper to get. You know, parking in the terms of.
Maybe.
Nine aesthetics. Or break all. Because it, I mean, it was a very high level conversation, it was not made of cube necessarily. Oh, we just.
About hundred thousand square foot, man.
Wait, no, yeah, no, this, oh, this is very far, the lease is gonna be signed with it next to. So this is, this is a done deal, and uh, the money's there, probably looking at four hundred. You got, you're probably on there, right, two square foot for five hundred.
Yeah.
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 So it's not.
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm the first one to go after the thing, it's okay. All times you're gonna agree with them.
Even me?
Oh, you always, I probably have to tear you.
You did a great job.
He's got a funny project, so. I, I guess.
He was supposed, he was supposed to bring me involved. Uh, he mostly. One thing's I'm usually agree, that's why I want to.
Thank you, second. Oh, thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you all. Where's the weather?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
It is the way.
Why was, I mean, this is about.
You know who's Slam's team is here? He's the only person. Yeah.
This has been years.
He was, he was.
So I don't know, it's.